Yes ma'am, I am ready. Mr. Davis? Can you hear me? Wait, sorry, hold on. Am I muted? Can you hear me?
I can hear you.
Okay, Mr. Davis?
He's muted.
Deli.
You all see him?
He put a thumbs up.
Okay. Ms. Davis?
Here.
Thank you. Dr. Jaeger?
Here.
Dr. Dykman?
Yeah.
Mr. Worthy?
Yeah.
Dr. Gant?
Here.
Dr. Knox?
Here.
Dr. Maddox? Dr. Maddox? Maddox here.
I don't see her.
Did you all hear when I was calling from Mr. Stevens?
No, I didn't hear your call.
No, I didn't hear that one.
I said, Mr. Stevens, are you present?
Apparently no.
I don't think so. I don't see.
I have no response from Mr. Stevens and no response from Dr. Maddox. She was with us earlier.
Right.
There she is.
Alright. We'll assume she's here, Dr. Gant.
Dr. Maddox is here. Okay. We'll have a brief moment of silent meditation. Thank you. We'll move forward with taking a look at our agenda. Going to open the floor for the agenda to be adopted or amended. If you would, take a look at the agenda. Floor is open for an adoption or amendment of the agenda.
The move.
Okay, Mr. Davis has made a motion to adopt the agenda. Dr. Jaeger? That's the second. Any discussions? Alright. All in favor of adopting the agenda that we have before us? If you would say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Are there any opposed? If you would say aye. And any abstaining? If you would say. We are going to move forward with our public comment section of the agenda. That will be item 3.1. A couple of technical issues on my end. Ms. Palmer agreed to read our public comment. So I am going to turn the floor over to Ms. Palmer.
Can you hear me?
I can.
Okay, I'll do the best I can. Hopefully I'll read them right. So the first one is from Ms. Tommy Farmer. And it says, "To the Athens Clark County Board of Education President, Members, and Dr. Thomas, good evening. It is stated that the BOE members do not respond to comments made. However, if a written copy of the comments are left with the Board of Education, a response will be made within 10 days of receipt. If this is correct, I would like for each member to receive a copy of these comments and questions. I believe transparency is vital to this school district. Therefore, would you please respond to the following questions? Why is Dr. Means on administrative leave? Why is it circulating that the West Broad Street School might not be designed to accommodate classroom space for our little ones on the waiting list? Is this true? What action has been taken in regards to Greg Davis's insensitive remarks at Greater Bethel African Methodist Episcopal Church? Why is it acceptable for BOE members to violate board policies and no consequences? In closing, I would like to publicly thank Dr. Means for his vision for this Clark County School District. Thank you." The next one is from Dr. Diane Dunston. "Thank you Board of Education for allowing citizen input during this tragic time in our world. My prayer is that those children who are the most vulnerable among us can survive yet another storm with the mental fortitude to continue to thrive. This is why I was so offended by a school board member using racial epithets in a so-called effort to get a point across. To his minority-listening audience, for those board members who justify and excuse these actions, this is yet another indication of the psychological damage you are instilling on our children, damage which perpetuates racism and discrimination in our society. God is not pleased, and all who participated in the maltreatment of children charged to their care will be held accountable for these actions. Those who committed the evil, those who stood silent or justified it. That is why we need strong leadership and compassion and diversity at the decision-making table. How different it would be for the children if they had Dr. Means as a role model in which to aspire. CCSD Board of Education will be on record for your actions of this school year. Actions where you placed a decent man on administrative leave from his important agenda of raising the educational attainment of children of color, diverting precious dollars slated for the education of our children. We will live with the negative outcomes from a discriminatory education of the children in Athens Clark County for years to come. Your actions speak loudly and affect some of us in ways you cannot even imagine. With concern and dignity, Dr. Diane E. Dunston." The next one is from Fred Smith. "Notwithstanding the current health crisis, the school board's apparent nonchalant reaction to one of its members reading a racial slur at a black church reflects poorly on the school board and the Athens community. What if I, as a black person, had gone into a historically white church or a temple or synagogue and read a passage containing a vile derogatory slur against another people? Unimaginable. Of all places, the school board read the hurtful term in a historically black church before black youth and black elders. Our children and community deserve better. Since he hasn't done the right thing by resigning, the school board should remove him. He has lost the right to serve on the school board in this community, especially in a district where more than 80% of students are non-white. Decency matters, African-American school boards. He insulted and disrespected you as well. The eyes of this community and other communities are watching. The students are watching. Respectfully, Fred O. Smith, Sr." The next one is from Attorney John M. Clark. "The actions that have taken place in the Clark County School District against Dr. Means are a travesty to justice. Where is the fairness? Where is the equity? Can you say you actually have a clear conscience before God and man? How can you, in good faith, dismiss a man of Dr. Means' caliber who has shown significant improvements in the academic enhancement of students in the school district, especially those who were two to three grade levels behind their counterparts? Can we appeal to you to elaborate on the real issues here? Can your cowardice treatment of Dr. Means have anything to do with his cultural background? I know it does. It appears to be virtually impossible to be open, honest, and transparent about the charges leaned against Dr. Means. Zachariah 16:17. Abonished us, these are the things you are to do. Speak the truth to each other and render true and sound judgment in your courts. Do not plot evil against your neighbor and do not love to swear falsely. I hate all this, declares the Lord. It's your conscience you have to live with. However, I request the board members, Greg Davis and Tawana Maddox, support the reinstatement of Dr. Means along with their colleagues. May God be with you and have mercy upon you." Sorry. Sorry, I lost my place.
Oh, she's bad. She's bad.
The next one is from Linda R. Smith. "My name is Linda R. Smith, retired educator of the Clark County School District for 33 and 1/2 years. I have always been proud and blessed to be a part of the district. I have always had an excellent relationship with parents, administrators, the Board of Education, and the community. We all try our best and hope that everyone gets along well for the benefit of our children in the district. Unfortunately, that's not always the case, and we need to express disappointment. Failure and disappointment are inevitable parts of life, yet difficult and challenging to deal with. It has been challenging for the community and some members of the Board of Education to agree what is best for our students. Now here we go, another challenge between a board member and the community based on a poem he read in one of our African-American churches. We have not solved the challenge about what is best for our students, but we can work to solve the current challenge. Let me offer a solution for the current challenge. All board members should go into executive session and discuss Mr. Davis's behavior and recommend he come before the community, church members, and students to apologize for his lack of sensitivity. His sincere apology would be a step towards a healing process and get the focus back to the challenge of what is best for our students. All board members and the community need to unite for our students." The next one. "I am a parent-concerned member and retired educator from Clark County School District. Has always been committed to upholding the values and ethics. I am writing in response to an issue with a board member using the term 'nigger.' In an African-American church, board members are expected to govern themselves appropriately at all times. The use of the N-word when addressing any audience is highly offensive and inappropriate. The word con- conveys strong negative feelings dating back to centuries of abuse directed to African-Americans. Oxford Dictionary cites that the term 'nigger' is strongly racially offensive when used by a white person in reference to a black person. Urban Dictionary cites that the word is so offensive that school districts have banned novels that contain the N-word. My question to the board, how effective is a member whose role is to help make decisions for a largely minority school district but yet appears to have extreme lack of respect for its minority students and personnel? I would like to see the board take action concerning this matter." Glenda Colbert. "Of all the poems by Langston Hughes and all other things that could have been read to the African-American children, why would a white person, especially a white man, go into a black church and read this poem? Even if he read it, the N-word is in it. Why would he say the N-word outright when he could have said the N-word instead or skipped the word altogether? The poem still would have flowed in his reading of it. The big question is, why did he choose this poem to read? Unless he was trying to make a point to the kids that are the N-word, and he is a white man of a great white race, and that he is racist. The Board of Education member is a professional counselor, and this alone should have made him not do this to children. Why would he do that and think that black people are not and were not going to be upset? Well, I am a black person and a black woman, and I am upset. I thought this man was a better person than this. Like, there is not enough racial tension going on in the world today as it is, and he had to show a lack of intelligence in doing something like that and add to the racial tension. See where we are now, this battling back and forth about race." The next one is from Frankie Hill. "Greg Davis, your colleague, fellow board member, cannot think that our community is going to forget the egregious that he committed during Black History Month 2020. Reading the N-word in a poem that describes a black man being abused and mistreated by a white man, a Klansman was tasteless and disrespectful. More importantly, this prognominated a lack of, a total lack of appropriate judgment. This board member should have known that a white man can never find the right audience, place, and time to use this offensive word. Contrary to what some white people believe, many African-Americans do not tolerate the use of that word in our homes or in our presence. We know our history, and we refuse to go back in time. This board member was very uncomfortable using this word. Another board member tried to advise against reading it. He ignored the attempt. This says who he really is. As a result, he does not need to be part of any decisions that will impact our students. He should have known that the use of this word by him would trigger too many emotions. He should have known the Black History Month is a time to celebrate our accomplishments, a time to encourage each other, our children, and not a time to reflect on how the Klansmen beat or abused our people. As a result of this behavior, he should resign. No, there is no other acceptable option. Why? Because this word denotes only negative characteristics that depict who black people are. As a race, people are not ignorant and obsessively self-indulgent. We are a creative people and a vast array of accomplishments. On this Sunday afternoon, Greg Davis manifested who he really is and will not be forgotten. If he does not resign, we expect the Board of Education to take appropriate action. If he truly knew that the N-word meant what the N-word meant to our ancestors, he would never have read it in that poem. Finally, this Board of Education has already demonstrated their disregard for equity when they dismissed the abusive treatment of Dr. Means by John Knox. Hopefully, this will be replicated in this matter." The next one is from Barbara Pierce. "Dear members of the Board of Education, I am the Vice President of the State of Georgia NAACP. Hopefully, you remember my appearance on March 5, 2020 School Board Meeting. I was there to express my concerns about Superintendent Dr. Demond Means. For the sake of our children, I would continue to ask each of you to dig deep into your thoughts and make the right decision despite of whatever personal grudges you may carry. According to some of Dr. Means' accomplishments over the last two years are: facilitated the strategic planning process, led the adoption of the new K-8 Literacy Program, eliminating the use of various programs across the district; increased student achievement at some of the most challenging schools in the district; constructed a balanced budget for the past two years; and grew the fund balance for the district. These are just four out of many accomplishments that Dr. Means has accomplished. One of the most disturbing thoughts I and others are battling is that how was a man approved because of all of his accomplishments a few months prior to continuing leading the Athens School District? And within weeks later, placed on administrative leave? It doesn't make sense. Please explain this action to us. For several weeks, we have been patiently waiting for a dignified answer. It is time for action. Many parents, citizens, educators, ministers, and community activists have expressed their voices and support for Dr. Means. Again, if there is any reason why such a respected man who advocates for all children and community doesn't deserve to be reinstated as Clark County School Superintendent, then please share the reasons directly to the Office of the NAACP, Georgia, and she gives the address. I would like to be thrilled to report back to the Georgia State NAACP Executive Committee with a positive outcome. We are graciously asking for you, the Athens Clark County School Board, to reach into your heart without prejudice and personal grudges. Let's put the children first. Please make the decision immediately to reinstate Dr. Means. The district is paying a healthy sum of taxpayers' hard-earned dollars for a passionate individual to sit at home waiting for work for his earning. Do the right thing. Think about the children." The next one is from Fred Smith, Jr. "I am a proud graduate of the Clark County Public Schools. Athens is a special place, and I appreciate more and more these days. These days, when I talk about growing up in Athens, I often remark on things that my childhood seemed unremarkable. Schools in most of the United States are not particularly integrated, let alone America's neighborhoods. But I am a beneficiary of having grown up in a strong, diverse school and community. It wasn't perfect. In 7th grade, a student called me the N-word during recess. A moment forever burned in my memory. My 8th-grade English teacher taught us that slavery was not the cause of civil war, and my classes were starkly racially segregated in high school, even though my school was very integrated. And still, I remember Athens as a place where equality, fairness, and justice mattered. The progressiveness of Athens is not an accident. It is the result of struggles, advocacy, and courage. This includes courage by people in power, courage by people in positions like the school board. Indeed, I might remember my racially inclusive childhood differently if a school board member had deemed it appropriate to use the N-word in my presence in a place I felt safe, like church. And certainly, I would remember my childhood differently if the local school board sat in silence, a board perhaps shaken and scarred by other costly battles. I can't believe that 20 years after I graduated, I'm writing this letter to say that the use of the N-word by a public official is absolutely unacceptable and being able to use this word without censor or recourse, even worse. In Athens I lived in, this would be obvious. I hope it still is." And then... The last one is from Lee Smith.
Reading. Me too.
Um... Sorry. "During these heart-wrenching times, my thoughts and prayers go out to the students of Athens Clark County, especially the ones most shattered by this global crisis because, among other things, they were already academically neglected in the system. As a teenager growing up in rural Georgia during the late 60s, I was a participant of school integration and helped set the tone to stand up and speak out against racism. I was called the N-word so often, I had to learn how early how to compartmentalize my feelings in order to concentrate on schoolwork and block any psychological effects. In 2020, a white male school board member around my age thought it was perfectly acceptable and appropriate to walk in a historically African-American church and read a poem containing the N-word. Actually, the poem itself was inappropriate and contains racial slurs and innuendos at many levels. It is impossible for me to be silent on this issue. Like many African-Americans my age, I find the N-word one of the most offensive words in the English language, so offenses have developed for occasions when it must be read. Reading the N-word in a poem doesn't emulate its harmfulness or hurtfulness. Sometimes ago, I was working with a 5th-grade student who was preparing for a presentation. The poem she was going to recite had the N-word in it. Before I could tell the student to substitute the word, she had a good judgment to ask if she should use another word. It is ironic that an adult school board member representing the students of Athens Clark County found it acceptable to use this word. I have a great love of poetry. Langston Hughes is one of my favorite poets. There are so many poems written by poets that are encouraging, inspirational, and within proper historical context. The question is, why did the school board member choose a poem entitled 'Coup de Clas' containing racial slurs? What was the board member's point? The great white race? Next question, will the Athens Clark County School Board simply move forward without so much as addressing this matter? If so, what are you saying to or about our youth? There are others in the community who have been beaten mentally and psychologically by racism and racial slurs. What is the board's silence saying to them? Respectfully, Lee Smith." And I will forward all these emails to you.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Palmer. We'll move forward with our Board of Education committee reports. A couple of things to remember if your phone or computer is not on mute. Please be sure that you have it on mute. And then with our upcoming reports, please be sure to make those as brief as possible. We'll start with Finance Committee.
Was that the Finance Committee?
Yeah, that was the Finance Committee, yes.
Okay, I don't have a report. I talked with Mr. Chris Griner earlier, I think last week, and he decided that we wouldn't have a finance meeting. And then he would share the financial report with the board and also the audience later.
Okay, thank you for that report, Mr. Worthy, or for that update. Government Relations Committee.
Yes. Yes, we have two resolutions that the Government Relations Committee has discussed earlier this week that we changed the language of, and we will introduce them in other business and ask for the school board to support it so that we can push it forward to the Georgia School Board Association. So I will discuss those two resolutions at that time.
Okay, thank you. Policy Committee, Mr. Davis and Dr. Myers.
We've got a number of items that we're going to be voting on. We've got... So when we get down to approving certain resolutions, I mean, certain policies for the public comment, we will discuss them at that time, as will we once we have three that are up for a vote by the board.
Okay. Thank you. Property Committee.
Yes, we have met three times. I believe we met Monday, we met today, and one day last week. And of course, we met in executive session, so therefore, let me give a verbal report on that, but hopefully, we agree that we will be meeting sometime next week. And hopefully, we'll be able to bring something to the board, and we could be verbal on it.
Okay. Thank you. Moving forward with our Board and Community Reports, we'll start with the Athens Area Community Foundation.
Hello, we're meeting next month.
Dr. Maddox, can you say that again for me?
We're next month, so there will be no report today.
Okay, thank you. Our Community Oversight Committee and Spots Report.
Hi, yes, we met on the March 17th remotely. There was a lot of discussion at the COC about concerns about the changes to the economy and the effect of COVID-19 on the economy and on SPLOs dollars. That took quite a while. I can summarize it briefly to say that the worst-case scenario could be 10% or 15% drops in our monthly uptake to the SPLOs as long as this is going on, so there's some concern about the budgeting. After we talked about that, we mostly discussed the track-and-field issues for the high school, how the Clark Middle School is moving forward with side-on... um, how the Clark Middle School is moving forward with site analysis and surveys out. Wes Broad, uh, believed the discussion focused on waiting for the next big community meeting, which I understand will have to probably be put on hold until we can all meet in person again. And then they are still looking for members from the community. If anyone wants to join the COC, uh, they can either contact me directly or the Chair, Alex Sam. That concludes my report.
Thank you. Envision Athens.
Thank you. Envision Athens meets again next week. I think our regular, regularly scheduled meeting is the 13th. Uh, we are also looking for community members. We have two members rolling off this year. And so what it, uh, what Envision Athens tries to do is keep a good cross-section of our entire community with diversity, uh, representing every contributing group in Athens-Clark County. So that application is out. It's on the Envision Athens website. If you're interested in serving on this, it's a two-year volunteer term, and you really do get a chance to meet some terrific people and take a deeper dive into how our community operates. Uh, we are still working on the 14 primary initiatives that were identified by the community with over 114 initiatives that we are trying to bring to reality. So that's pretty much what's happening with Envision Athens right now. And they're very active with the Chamber of Commerce, by the way. I think I sent you guys the links to that. Those are some very informative meetings that the Chamber and Envision Athens are hosting. They're hosted on Zoom, and they give access to the conversations from the leaders that are getting the frontline information about what's happening with COVID-19 in our community and its effects. So some really exciting things are happening. Relationships are being built that weren't necessarily there before, and I've just never seen or experienced anything where it seems like the entire community is pulling in the same direction to address this crisis. So join us on the conference calls and uh, listen to uh, what people are doing. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Georgia School Boards Association. Currently, I don't have any updates. I think with most of the emails that we get, I think that you all get them as well. Um, I haven't, I think I've received um, any information with any changes for the plans for the summer, um, but I don't have any updates at this time. Dr. Yeager.
I believe there was an email saying that the June meeting that was planned will shrink dramatically. It will still be held, and you'll focus on electing officers, but that the other parts of the meeting, the other two parts of the meeting will be postponed until the fall.
Right, really, okay, thank you for that. I don't, I must have overlooked that email.
That's correct.
We'll move forward with um, our February 2020 Financial Report.
Okay, thank you, Dr. Gant. Um, hey, Lisa, can you back up one, I'm sorry? And go to the financial, the financial report, the middle one right there. There you go, perfect, thank you. I'm sorry, my screen, I mean, yep. Can actually see the screen right this second, hold on a second. All right, technology. Hold on a second, let me pull out, um, there we go. All right, um, yeah, before you, that's sorry about that. The ballot sheet as of February 2020, their cash balance, 66.7 million. Again, most of that, um, roughly 95%, well, we're earning interest on all of it. Most of it's invested either Georgia Fund One or US Treasuries. Uh, was about a little over 71 million last month. Again, the continuing trend that we see this time of year, where expenditures continue to catch up with our revenues. Um, Lisa, if you could scroll down, there we go, thank you. Uh, you'll see the income statement as of February 2020. Um, we're, you'll see our total income's about 76%, which is what we expect this time of year. Our property, a little bit higher because of property taxes. We're almost at 99%, we actually are over 99% when you look at the, when you see the March financials next month. Um, expenditures were about 54%. Keeping in mind that that's where we should be roughly, or that's the time of year, because our, or we spread our salaries out over, you, our contracts run from September 1st to August 31st, but it covers the prior, so, you know, July and August is when our salaries catch up. So those are actually 30th. So that, that number is typical this time of year. So those are all good numbers. Um, Lisa, if you don't mind, if you could pull up the key performance indicators now.
21.
Uh, the key, the graphs, the key performance.
Oh, okay.
Yes.
The one you had for there again, thank you. Um, you see the cash position, we're a little, of course, ahead of where we are last year. Our fund balance is a little bit higher. Same thing with our fund balance position, um, higher, which is indicated with our cash position. Income collected is a little bit higher, all positive trends. Again, expenses paid are a little bit lower. Um, if you scroll down to the last, we're going to make this easier, Lisa, next month. All this is actually going to be on one document, so be excited. Um, if you look at our budget versus actual revenue, um, actual revenue is a little bit less than budget. But keep in mind, we got our property taxes, you know, a little bit early this year. So that, that's not an alarming trend there. That's kind of the way this cash, the cash flow estimate we does, that's kind of typical. Um, no, no call of concern there. Uh, budget versus actual expenditures, um, actual is a little bit lower than budget. And down at the bottom, we're tracking about the same fund balance we have increased for this year. Um, a little close to 3 million. We actually finished the March financials today, and it's right around 3 million as well. So I'll give you a little preview of next month.
Cash flow.
Yes, thank you, sorry. That is going to be hard to read. Uh, the main numbers down at the bottom, um, toward the third column over from the left, that 2 million, the almost $3 million, 2.9 million. That's what we're anticipating the increase to reserves at this point in time. And again, as I mentioned, for March, it looks very similar, a little over 3 million. Um, no negative trends there, exactly. I will say, you know, what kind of monitor, um, you know, with school being, you know, out for in-class instruction, there probably will be some expenditures. You know, we haven't been running our buses, you know, we have with food distribution, but not the normal route. So, I mean, we're anticipating that 3 million may grow just for those reasons. But we'll have a better feel for that, actually, as we get to the end of April. Um, March didn't really show much impact there, but when we get to April, we'll definitely be able to get a better feel for that. So, and I mean, that's some considerations we'll have to make for next year as well. Um, with the understanding, you know, that, you know, there are some items that we may have to look at possibly carry it over because items weren't able to be spent or include them in next year's budget. So we'll definitely have those conversations soon. Um, that's my presentation. I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Uh, Chris.
Yes, sir, Mr. Worthy.
Okay, I, I don't have a question about what you presented, but I've asked you this before. Uh, with the ELS law firm that we hired, and it stated to me that they had sent some invoices, and I think the last figure you gave me was somewhere close to uh, $13,000, but I'm quite sure that it has grown uh, from that amount. Can you uh, share that with the board and the public?
Yes, sir. Uh, when I told you last, we got our first two invoices from them, and it was roughly around 13. Since then, we've got another invoice. I may ask Ms. Palmer, I think it was close to 8,000. We just paid it, so we're roughly sitting around 21,000 at this time.
So 21,000, uh, and I, did you say that you paid the 8,000?
I'm sorry, what was that, Mr. Worthy?
Have you paid any of these invoices?
Yeah, yes, sir, that's the total amount paid is the 21,000.
Okay, so it's paid, okay, thank you. That's what I wanted to hear, because we, we go.
And I think that's through the month of, uh, Lisa, make it chime in.
Through um, the last one.
February, maybe.
Um, I think, I think so, I think it was February was the last.
Yeah, typically, they run about a month behind with billing. I mean, that's just typical.
Um, actually, let's see, the last one, it said, um, it just says, I think it runs through March.
Okay, so that's, that's good, yeah. So that, that means we're pretty much up to date, then, Mr. Worthy. Obviously, trying to make sure.
And that was paid out of the general account?
Yes, sir, out of our general fund for legal, legal fees.
Thank you, Chris.
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Are there any other questions about our February financial report?
Mr. Knotts, as is staying up, Dr. Gant.
Okay, Dr. Knotts.
There we go. Um, so, Chris, with our 3 million or so surplus, where does that put, um, put our fund balances a percentage? That, that kind of 15% or more target, do we know where we're going to kind of come in, or we hope?
Yes, sir, um, if you base it on this year's budgeted expenditures, it's a, I want to think, right ahead, about 18.5%, somewhere in that ballpark. Now, now, keep in mind that the sale of Mitchell Bridge is still counted in fund balance, which is Fund 101. So if you take that 2.8 billion that's still sitting in there, it gets us down a little over 7, 17%.
And I don't remember if we've had this conversation, but I know with Larry, he had told us that, um, after 2008, it was more in keeping with other districts to look at 15 as a lower bound, and 15 to 20% is, is kind of where districts are, is that right?
Yes, sir, that's a good spot to be, because I think, and it's, the way our district is, we have small growth each year. Uh, now, our budget, you know, does, it doesn't grow like some other districts, like ones I've been at previously, where it's, you know, it's, it's a struggle. Ours, our growth is small, but yeah, you like the 15 to 20%. Especially, I think, more so now as we head into some uncertain times, probably budget-related, maybe from the state level, um, as we go through the pandemic, you know, the COVID-19. So I think having those reserves in that 15 to 20% range is very, very wise at this time.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Okay, any additional questions? I'm going to circle back up. I actually skipped over the um, Foundation for Excellence in Public Education. Um, so, Dr. Knotts, if you can give us an update on that, and then I'll move to the President's report.
Thank you. Uh, the main update from the Foundation for Excellence is that they are going forward with their annual awards program. And uh, so this past Monday night was the deadline for nominations, uh, or nominees to complete their section, uh, was actually on Friday, and then it was moved to Monday, so, just trying to get this right. Um, so that, that's where that stands. And I, I really wanted to do an update in case anybody's watching that's doing a reference letter for any nominees, and you know who you are. Uh, the deadline for that is Monday, uh, let me get the date right here. Monday, the 13th at 11:59 PM, I think that's right. Um, and so, um, that, that deadline has not changed. So if you're listening and everything got kind of crazy, and you forgot to do a reference letter for one of the awards, uh, then, um, just know that the, the deadline for the reference letter has not changed. And so I'll, I'll give more updates, uh, as that proceeds. Thank you.
Dr. Knotts.
Okay, Worthy?
Yes, I, I, and you may have said this, but I don't recall. But anyway, normally, we have the um, Foundation for Excellence banquet in October. So is that date still on pending, or what?
I, I have not heard an update on that. Uh, my guess is that, uh, like everything else that has a fall timeline to it, it's probably being thought about right now, but it's probably on a back burner as we get through the next couple of months. That's my guess.
Thank you.
Thank you. Um, the only thing that I have with the President's report is just really a repeat of last week, but I just, I do want to highlight two things. Um, and that is, Ms. Palmer did send out to the board a, a survey. And so if you have not completed those two individual surveys, if you could go ahead and do that, so that we can um, continue putting together tentative plans for our professional development over the next school year. And that is, um, tonight for me, we'll move forward with the Superintendent's report. Dr. Thomas?
Yes, ma'am, my report is short as well. I just want to thank um, all of the Clark County School District and community members for their help during this last month. We spoke more specifically about that last week, so I will not prolong the time for that. But we continue to provide thousands of meals for students weekly in addition to amazing work being done by our instructional team, our teachers and principals, ensuring that students are continuing to receive instruction in a distance learning format through digital resources as well as packet deployment. And also ensuring that we're meeting the social-emotional needs of students as issues arise. So we're very appreciative of the entire district team for their work to ensure that that happens. On a positive note, we received today or this week a $10,000 donation from ABB Baudor to our advanced manufacturing lab for the Athens Community Career Academy. So we're really excited. So as of now, we have over $90,000 that have been donated by area businesses to help with our renovation of that space so that our students can learn in a very top-notch facility at the Career Academy. And I think that is it for me. I have one addition when we get to a vote, but it's not on consent, so I think that's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any questions for Dr. Thomas? Okay.
No, I don't have a question up. I'm sorry, Dr. Gant. I, I do have a question, and I don't know if it's Dr. Thomas or who this question is for, but um, that $10,000 donation, was that made directly to us, or was it made through the foundation?
I received a text about that, and I think, let me look, that they did not say, but I'm assuming it went to the foundation where those other funds are.
Okay, and so then, I guess my real question is this, we have a need to be or have a 501(c)(3) so that people could make tax-deductible donations directly to the school district? And then we could earn the interest on that money until it's spent?
Donations to the district are already tax-deductible, so, uh, people could do that as well.
I didn't know that. So then we established a fund with the Athens Area Foundation so that people could receive, the Career Academy could receive tax-deductible dollars.
Right. I was just going to say, and then you can go attorney. There are some businesses that still are not allowed to make donations directly to a school district. So the foundation, from what I was told, serves as a conduit for those funds because they're not able to donate to the school system directly. That was what we were told when we researched this a couple of months ago.
Okay, uh, I'm sorry, is that what you were going to tell me, Dr. Brewett?
Uh, no, actually, um, and I'm not sure about, I, I mean, I, I don't claim to be a tax lawyer. Um, that may be just internal, uh, business restrictions rather than tax deduction restrictions. But, but anyway, um, what I was going to say is the, the Career Academy, I think it's set up, um, it, it has a little bit of a unique status, and I'm not sure if it falls under the same Internal Revenue Section as local governments and school districts or not. So that, there might be a difference there.
It's a program for, as we've defined it, yeah. Okay, I just was curious about that. And I don't want us to miss an opportunity to, to earn interest on, on donations either, so. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Thomas.
You're welcome.
Any additional questions? Okay. We're gonna move forward, uh, to item number nine. And we're gonna go ahead and take a look at, um, policy JCD-A. This is up for, um, this is, uh, to be posted for public comment for four weeks, uh, as, uh, the exhibit JCD-A. First, if, I'll, I'll open the floor for a motion for, um, for these two items.
I still move.
Second. Second, okay. And then open the floor for, um, just a very brief sentence, and then any questions, and we'll move forward. Dr. Myers and Mr. Davis?
Um, this, this is something that we do every year in terms of review our, um, uh, student code of conduct. We did a massive overhaul. Uh, I want to say, was it, Don, was it three years ago? Or two years ago?
Two thousand seventeen.
Okay. So, uh, you know, I think it's a, it's a well-organized, well-laid-out document. Um, and that's the exhibit. The, um, the policy itself simply establishes the fact that we would have a student code of conduct, and there was much discussion as to, um, how parents would be made aware of it. And I think we, we came to an understanding that everyone was comfortable that, um, these policy, this, uh, student code of conduct would be made available to parents, um, as school opened up, and, and they visited the schools to meet the teachers of those, of their students, of their children. Don, if you have anything you want to add?
Um, you know, that's all very accurate. The minor change to the policy JCD-A is based on strong recommendation from schools administrators and teachers who felt like an additional paper shuffle of a form requiring a signature from a parent was ineffective and cumbersome. But the spirit of asking parents to be engaged with student discipline and to actually read the code remains very important. And so we feel like we struck a balance between not requiring this extraneous paper shuffling, um, but also supporting and documenting genuine parent involvement and engagement around the code, and also leaving some flexibility to the schools and teachers who are the ones that are required to do the, the great paper shuffle. So we want to get to the spirit of what's most important, which is people reading and understanding the code. And, and to that end, we will still ask them to acknowledge receipt, and we'll invite them to ask any questions that they might have of the code.
Thank you for that overview. Are there any, any questions or comments for JCD-A and the exhibit JCD-A? Okay, I don't think I see any hands or hear anything. Okay, we can go ahead and take a vote then. So all of those in favor of both JCD-A and the exhibit JCD-A, um, being posted for public comment for four weeks, if you would show by raising your hands and saying aye, please?
Aye.
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 Okay. If there are any opposed, if you would raise your hand and say aye. And if there are any abstaining, if you would raise your hand and say aye. Thank you. Okay. Just a reminder, if you could, please put your phone on, or your computer on mute. We'll move forward, and we'll take these policies one at a time. These are policies to be actually adopted, uh, or rescinded. Uh, let's start with policy ten point one, and that is, uh, public participation in board meetings. I'm gonna open the floor for a motion.
So moved.
Okay. Mr. Davis, is there a second?
Second.
Is that Dr. Yeager?
Yeah.
Okay. Uh, gonna open the floor for any, uh, remaining questions or comments?
Yeah, start again.
I have one as well.
Okay, Mr. Worthy, and then Ms. Davis?
Yeah. I made some comments pertaining to this policy last, uh, week. This is a hot, hot item. People, it's hot. And you have a public, a negative public outcry in the community about this policy. And as I stated last week, as I stated last week, this policy should be sent back to the policy committee to be wordsmithed. Now, having said that, let me make several other comments here. Uh, I do believe, uh, that this particular policy, since we are talking about comments and et cetera and whatnot, uh, if, uh, if Lisa can put this policy on the string, something I want to point out.
All right.
Okay. Okay, I'm back. Did you hear me?
Yes.
With this particular policy, I firmly believe, and I don't think is, uh, written in any other policy that we have, I firmly believe that, uh, we need to shorten our, uh, meetings. Since Dr. Means arrived, we have a shorter agenda, but our meetings longer, very long. I was talking with, uh, my commissioner, Jared, uh, Neesmith, and that's something that they've done with the mayor and commissioners, uh, commit, uh, meetings, to make meetings shorter. Also, shorten the time for members to speak. Same as we giving, uh, public, people from the public to speak, and giving them three minutes, why not put them, uh, uh, three minutes on, uh, board members? That's what really lengthening our, uh, meetings. And, uh, Commissioner Jared Neesmith said to me that, uh, they have a three-minute time limit on the, uh, members to speak. Uh, and as I said, and I want to put emphasis on this, since Dr. Means arrived, the agenda is much, much shorter, but the meetings are longer. This is senseless. Now, uh, Lisa, if you can scroll up near the bottom, something else I want to say. Okay, right there, on item ten, I believe, what, let's see. Yeah, here it is. Uh, any board meeting, school board members, uh, do not respond to questions or comments, uh, from the public, which is okay, and that's fine. We shouldn't, shouldn't get in a dialogue with them. Now, the next, uh, statement says, "The district will respond to the public input as needed or appropriately within ten working days." Now, I'm probably with the ten working days, but the statement that the president would read at the beginning of the meeting, it states that if you, uh, any further questions, those questions would be sent to the superintendent or the, uh, president, whichever would be appropriate. But now, when you read that statement, it says the district. The district shouldn't be responding to, uh, questions from the, uh, public input, et cetera. And like I said, we need to, uh, wordsmith that and put that in there. Uh, those questions should be sent to the superintendent or the, uh, president, whichever would be appropriate, uh, to respond to those questions, and maybe both of them together. I, I don't know. But, uh, these things that I've said in terms of ordoning our, uh, meetings also put in a limit on, uh, the amount of time a board member would speak, et cetera. We need to put this as a part of that policy. I feel real strong about that, because our board member, our board meeting, sorry, just too lengthy. And we spend hours and hours going through the agenda at a work session, and that's why we changed it from agenda-setting session to a work session. Then we get in the board, regular board meeting, and we have some of that. That is senseless. I would think that we are more intelligent than that. Thank you. That's what I have to say about this policy. And the last thing I would say, send it back to the policy committee.
Thank you. Uh, Ms. Davis, and then Dr. Knox?
My objection is simply that, um, I'm not in favor of the punishment part of this clause, of this policy, where we talk about barring people from speaking for three months or for six months. I think the warning and a letter would be sufficient. I don't really want to see us in a position of shutting down the very public that elected us to this position. And I think that that is extremely punitive, and it seems to be a fairly broad stroke when I think, um, as we've discussed it in policy committee, and I did get a chance to go to those committee meetings, that we're only talking about a couple of people that seem to violate this. So I would ask us to not create a policy to handle something that I think we already have a means of addressing without this, uh, radical change. Thank you.
Thank you. Dr. Knox?
Well, I actually had a question for Mr. Worthy. Uh, would, was he proposing that in this particular policy, we put something in about how long, uh, board members speak? Because that doesn't seem to be appropriate for this particular policy.
If it's not appropriate for this particular policy, it needs to be put somewhere else, as I said. Now, uh, I'm pretty familiar with, uh, the policies, and I'm not saying that I know all of the policies, but I don't recall that being anywhere in any policy. Now, if you all recall that, uh, speak up and let it be known. If it's not in policy BCBI, it should be in a policy somewhere, because I still stick by what I said. The meetings are too long, and we need to put a limit on the time we have a board member to speak.
Okay. I, I just want a clarification on that. It sounds like that's a good discussion for a future policy committee meeting. Uh, but maybe, maybe not right now. I mean, now that it's been mentioned. Um, I'll, I'll pass. I haven't commented on the policy itself, but I just wanted clarification from Mr. Worthy on that. Thank you.
And let me add this, uh, Dr. Knox. I was speaking with a retired superintendent. That was a superintendent in Overthorpe County and also in Putnam County. And he said they have a policy that that board meetings wouldn't run more than an hour. Some of the same restrictions that I mentioned a few minutes ago about having a three-minute limit on, uh, the times that, uh, uh, board members to speak.
And, and I'll just respond that I think, uh, Dr. Gant, we actually had a little conversation about that a long time ago. Because in the, uh, debating society that I advise, there actually were limits on that. And so I think that'd be a great conversation, but I don't think right now is the time to have that conversation.
When is the time?
A policy committee meeting.
That's what I'm saying. If it's.
This isn't a policy committee meeting, though.
I, I know that. I think I'm smart enough to know that. This is a regular board meeting. But what I'm saying is this, if, overall, this policy should be sent back to the policy committee. And what I proposed a few minutes ago, if you're not gonna add what I said to this policy, then yes. Uh, that should be a discussion in the policy committee.
Okay. Uh, Mr. Davis?
Yes, I was just gonna say, it seems like it would be more, uh, in our discussion on norms for the board.
You mean, a, as far as this being a norm that's added?
Correct.
I guess that certainly could be um, an option. I, I mean, I would guess it could be here, uh, with norms or policy. That, you know, may require a little bit more conversation, but they could certainly talk about both of those as options.
I just wanted to add.
Oh, uh, Mr. Stevens?
Yeah, I just wanted to add that, uh, I'm in agreement with, uh, Linda Davis's comments, uh, regarding the penalties, uh, in this, and I believe it, it really needs to go back to the policy committee.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Stevens. Um, any other, I think I've already shared, but I, I, I would support it going back to policy, um, in general. I think when there are issues, I, I don't philosophically think that policies need to be created for the minority of individuals. So I do think there are a couple of additional steps, uh, that could be taken. And, um, and I think there are some areas for clarity, because there's still some, um, subjectivity that's left here. Um, any additional, uh, is that, uh, Dr. Dykman?
Yes. Um, I also, um, I've been thinking about it since last week, and I know last week I said that I feel like if we're gonna have a policy, we should have, um, something there to say what happens if somebody violates a policy. Um, and I still think that, that there needs to be something more specific to make sure that we do follow procedures and make sure that, um, our meetings don't, um, make sure that they stay under control. Uh, but I, I'm also fine with sending it back to the policy committee to see if there's something else that, that can be, um, some wordsmithing, as Mr. Worthy said. I, um, I was looking at the mayor and commission, um, policies to see what they say about public comment, um, and they don't have anything very specific. Um, so I thought that might be something we could follow, but they don't have anything very specific. But, um, I, I don't want it to be the case that we are trying to silence anybody, but I do think that it is important that we are clear in, um, the things that we do to run our meetings. And I am also in agreement that we need to do that for ourselves as well. But I also was thinking that that is a different conversation or something to talk about when we talk about norms for board meetings.
Thank you. Um, Dr. Thomas or Dr. Maddox, could you add to the, the note? Um, I know we had a document on our norms, and so, just so we'll have a mental note about this possibly being another norm, if it doesn't neatly fit under policy.
Yes, ma'am. I'll add it.
Okay. Thank you. Dr. Yeager?
I was just gonna say that when I took the new school board member training, one of the things that we were shown was a way to access all of the policies of all the school boards around the state. And it could be worth one of us, I volunteer, to do some research on how other boards around the state handle this particular issue. Um, and I, I don't have a big dog in this fight, so I'm happy to take it back to the policy committee and, uh, and work on it.
Thank you. Uh, so right now, we are with policy BCBI, and I mentioned that is on. Oh, yes.
My end was up, I'm sorry.
Oh, okay. I'm sorry about that, Dr. Maddox.
Um, it's fine. We want to take it back, but I do believe, um, that we definitely need to have a consequence behind any of our policies. I mean, the, the reason why we're in the place we are now, because we, we had the, if you do this, but we don't have the other side of that with several things. So I definitely stand by that, and I know that, um, I've read several things, then we received an email, and it might have been thought that I brought that policy up, and really, my concern with that was not as much the three minutes than it was the audience participation, um, and, and the audience being under control so that we can conduct the meeting. And I had asked for that to be a part of this policy. Um, but, you know, um, our attorney said that that was not really necessary, that, you know, understood. But I'm, I was more concerned as a whole, this policy, that we have these meetings, and we are able to have. these meetings and we are able to have meetings. I know I've heard several things in the comments today about, you know, taking things personally. And yes, I take it personally when I come to my business, no matter where I am. You know, I'm a citizen first, you know, I'm on the board, but I expect to be able to come to a board meeting, not to be told, I know what you know, I wish you were dead. Those things are just not, I don't understand why we can sit here and pretend like those things are okay. So, you know, for that, I stand with, with the policy. I am definitely with the board. If the board chooses to take it back and we have further discussion. Thank you.
Thank you. Any additional comments? I'm trying to scroll through. Dr. Knox is helping me see people's hands. So, right now, we have the motion to, a motion and a second to really adopt this policy. But it sounds like I hear at least a majority of individuals saying that they want to send it back to policy. Is there a substitute motion or which do you all want to go ahead and simply vote on the motion right that's at hand?
Dr. Dan?
Yes.
May I make a suggestion? If we're going to vote on this, because a motion already been made in a second. And if we're going to vote on this motion, may I make a suggestion to do a roll call vote? And person could say, each board member can say yea or nay? Is that okay with you?
Sure.
I know it's difficult to see all these heads going up. That's why I said that.
So, can I ask, what are the options? Can we just vote it down? Or can we, can I make a motion to send it back to policy so it doesn't actually fail? It just goes back to policy?
We can vote it down or make a substitute motion at this time.
Okay, so I would make a substitute motion at this time to send it back to the policy committee.
My second. Okay. Assuming that there's no further discussion, but just for the record, I'll ask. Okay. All of those in favor, well, actually, I will do, I will attempt to do a roll call. Okay. Dr. Dykman?
Yes, send it back to policy.
Okay, Mr. Worthy?
Yes. Send it back to policy.
Dr. Jaeger?
Yes.
Okay. Mr. Davis?
No.
Dr. Knox?
Yes. Yes.
Dr. Maddox?
No.
Ms. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Stevens?
Yes.
And myself, I am a yes to sending it back to policy. Ms. Palmer, do you have a count for us on that substitute motion?
Two no's.
Seven to two.
Okay. So seven yeses, two no's.
Did you capture that, Ms. Palmer? I don't know where she is. I was counting as we went along.
That's consistent with my.
Sorry, sorry. I'm trying to take minutes and watch this. Yes, I have seven two. No, Mr. Davis and no, Dr. Maddox.
Okay, thank you. So that motion, that substitute motion carries, which means that initial motion is no longer active. So, we will move forward with policy B D C. First, I'll open the floor for a motion and a second.
So moved.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Davis and Dr. Jaeger. Open the floor up for questions or discussion. And a brief, brief overview, Dr. Myers and Mr. Davis.
What this policy does is clarify how proposals for a policy change or for a new policy, how they become part of a discussion for the policy committee. And we had some vagueness in the way it was worded before. And so, we wanted to clarify that a proposed policy, a proposed new policy or policy change would be submitted either through a member of the policy committee or a board member in general, a school board member, or a staff person under the direction of the superintendent. So, that's what, that's what we've done in this language. Don, if you want to.
That's correct. It just provides clear guidance to community members who wish to bring forward a policy suggestion or idea. We value input from the community and we just want to make sure that we provide a clear path as the policy committees really responsible for developing the agenda.
Thank you. Are there any questions or further discussion? For policy B D C? We'll go ahead and take a vote.
John has his hand up.
Oh, okay. Sorry about that. Knox?
I just wanted to say that I like this change. When I was chair of policy, we had a situation where there were some interesting ideas brought from a community member. And I had hoped to be able to have those presented. And we, it was, it became kind of a confused situation because we didn't have clarity on this policy. So I think this is a good step in the right direction for transparency and, and giving the public a way to interact with the policy committee in a way that I think is true to our governance roles, but also provides that transparency. So I think long term, this is a good change.
I have a problem with this.
Thank you. Additional comments and questions?
I agree with what John said.
All right. So, Dr. Thomas, do you mind doing a roll call for us since you have the list of everybody? My screen has like 20 people on it.
Understand, give me one minute. I had the roll call and I will have it again in one second to make it easy and do it by by our districts. Mr. Davis?
Yay.
Mr. Stevens?
Yes.
Ms. Davis?
Yes.
Dr. Jaeger?
Yes.
Dr. Dykman?
Yes.
Mr. Worthy?
Yes.
Dr. Gant?
Yes.
Dr. Knox?
Yes.
Dr. Maddox?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
We'll move forward with policy J Q K A. Going to open the floor for a motion.
So moved.
Thank you, Mr. Davis. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. Dr. Jaeger, thanks. Mr. Davis and Dr. Myers, if you could give a brief overview?
Okay, the, now, one, one change, and I don't see it made yet, but it's something that Dr. Myers and I talked about earlier today, and that is to take out the word foreign and just have immigrant students. Is that correct, Dr. Me, Dr. Myers?
It is. If you click on the actual policy, it might not have changed on the agenda, but.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
I think, wasn't it international? I thought we said international.
Okay, let me, let me clarify that. We did talk about that, Dr. Myers and myself. And what, what was explained to me is that we have a policy dealing with exchange students. And it's, and it's another policy. And it, it, it covers those international students. This is, this is a policy that, that deals with immigrant students. And the, the word foreign does not really have to be part of it. But with the why, the way this came about is that students who are, we have many, and we've had many over the years of immigrant students who are enrolled in our schools, but they're under a J one visa, not a F one. And F one is really orientated towards immigrant students who are coming over to attend on the university level, particularly in terms of private universities. And so, as the policy was currently written, F one students would be, they could attend, but they would do so by paying tuition. And our school district, we don't charge tuition for any student to, to enroll. And so, in actuality, those students that you're talking about, Dr. Jaeger, in terms of exchange students, international students, they are coming over under another policy. So, I'll let Don to, to get more into the weeds than that, but that's, that's as much as I can verbalize.
So, that's, that's correct. This policy is intent, it's not about foreign exchange students or exchange, cultural exchange students. That policy is J Q K and it's titled exchange students. There was at some point in time, some, a clause tucked under this exhibit of J Q K A that differentiated between F and J visas. And it's, it's simply not accurate. And it's, it's kind of a circular, why we can't accept F one visas is because the only way a student can come on an F one visa is to pay tuition at a private school. We're not a private school, we don't accept tuition. So it's just simply, it's cleaning up a policy, we're not making any change. But we cannot change this policy to be so specific to cultural exchange students because this policy is very important, J Q K A and the exhibit, because it really affirms that our district accepts students who live here irregardless of immigration status. And so, I, but we, we also recognize that we need to, I think there was some concern that the word foreign, whether it's in front, whether it precedes foreign exchange student or foreign immigrant student is unnecessary and perhaps no longer politically correct. So in that spirit, the word foreign has been removed and the policy is unchanged as far as the intent to, to acknowledge that the school district accepts immigrant students regardless of status. But it takes out the incorrect piece to say that, that we would ever consider accepting an F one visa student because we're simply not permitted to, because we don't accept tuition. Mr. Pruitt, if there's any greater clarity that you can add to that?
The word immigrant was not part of this when we discussed this last week, foreign policy. The, the word immigrant was not there. It was just a discussion of foreign students and how the word foreign was not appropriate. So this feels like it just changed the color of this policy completely to me. I don't know, maybe I'm overreacting.
I have a similar sentiment, not, not in terms of an overreaction, but it does add clarity, I think. And, and that's what I'm struggling with because I did actually get to attend that policy committee meeting. And I like the exclusion of the word foreign because it again got us into this space of, we're talking about students that have a questionable or tentative legal status. Is that what we're talking about? Is that what we mean by immigrant students?
Policy was written the way, I think that, I think it was written so long ago. You can see in 92 is when it was first adopted. We were speaking about any students from other places, documented or undocumented or visa students or not, as foreign students. And we have a policy about exchange students that does not include the word foreign. It's simply exchange students, J Q K.
So what language do we use for students from a different district? If someone comes into our system from another school system, what is the language? The transfers, is, is that where we leave it, just that transfers?
Usually, I think we just say transfer students, new enrolled, transfer.
You pull up the exhibit, Lisa, that it clarifies, I think, the spirit. Now, we can, I'm not sure that this policy is absolutely necessary at all. There could be a recommendation that it's kind of antiquated, that it doesn't need to exist at all.
Well, because again, in, in some legal terms or circles, it's something I've, I've come across, foreign simply indicated somebody that was not from this particular jurisdiction. And so, again, that's, I'm just seeking clarity on what we mean by immigrant.
Well, immigrant was, was always part of this policy. It said, the exhibit, admission of immigrant or non-immigrant students, that was always, that was there.
Okay.
Obviously. And so, on further examination, this policy is not in its entirety about cultural exchange students. It really is about students who come generally with their family members from other countries to live here.
Yeah, because it's talking about the United States.
These definitions, the word immigrant was not added except for in the title to remove the word foreign. The definition, immigrant student and non-immigrant student.
See, the non-immigrant is in the wording. So that's what I don't understand somewhere. We've lost, because you could be an international student and not be an immigrant. I thought we decided to switch it to international from foreign and not immigrant. I don't remember talking about immigrant.
But, but we have a policy on exchange, international exchange students.
Okay, maybe we should be looking at that one alongside.
I move we put this one back in policy. I'm sorry.
Okay, so right now, we have, we had a motion to adopt this policy. And we had a second and discussion, and there's a substitute motion for this to go back to policy. Is there a second for that substitute motion?
I, I second that. I think, I understand the spirit of this. I think that, I think that language is really important and especially in a policy like this. So I just think it's worth maybe looking at other policies or figuring out the best use of language to describe exactly what it is that we're trying to get across.
Okay, so we have a second for that substitute motion. Any questions or discussion around that substitute motion to send policy J Q K A back to policy?
May I chime in just a moment to answer Dr. Myers' invitation to, to comment? I, I think what you're getting at is non-citizen students in this policy who can fall into either the immigrant or non-immigrant category, depending upon whether they're here permanently or just visiting for a period of time. Is that right?
That's my understanding.
So calling them immigrants, all of them, is not appropriate.
Right, yeah, I was kind of trying to suggest that maybe the, the solution might be to just title it non-citizen students rather than immigrant students.
All right. Well, so it sounds like, thank you, Mr. Pruitt. It sounds like further discussion may be needed around that. Or I think that's what the motion that's on the floor right now, maybe some clarity, more discussion. So we'll go ahead and take a vote on that substitute motion. Dr. Thomas or Ms. Palmer? Well, did I miss anyone that had a burning question or comment? Okay, Ms. Palmer or Dr. Thomas, if you would, do a roll call vote for us. And this is a motion to send this back to policy.
That's correct.
Want me to do it, Dr. Thomas?
I can't hear you.
I can't hear you.
Okay, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, Mr. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Stevens?
Yes.
Ms. Davis?
Yes.
Dr. Jaeger?
Yes.
Dr. Dykman?
Yes.
Mr. Worthy?
Yes.
Dr. Gant?
Yes.
Dr. Knox?
Yes.
Dr. Maddox?
Thank you.
All right, so that policy J Q K A, that motion carried and it will go back to policy. Moving forward with our, with number 11, our personnel recommendations, we'll start with the personnel list. Dr. Thomas?
Dr. Gant, I make a recommendation that the personnel list be accepted as presented.
Okay, I'm gonna open the floor for a motion.
I so moved.
Second.
All right, any questions for Dr. Thomas or cabinet? All right. All, oh, oh, go ahead, Dr. Thomas.
Would you like for me to do a roll call again?
Please, yes.
Mr. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Stevens?
Yes.
Ms. Davis?
Yes.
Dr. Jaeger?
Yes.
Dr. Dykman?
Yes.
Mr. Worthy?
Yes.
Dr. Gant?
Yes.
Dr. Knox?
Yes.
Dr. Maddox?
Yes.
Thank you. Moving forward with the April contract list. Dr. Thomas?
I make the recommendation that the April contract list be accepted as presented.
No move.
Thank you, Mr. Davis. Is there a second?
Second.
Any questions? Thank you, Mr. Worthy. Are there any questions for Dr. Thomas? Dr. Thomas, if you would, conduct the roll call for us.
Okay, Mr. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Stevens?
Yes.
Ms. Davis?
Yes.
Dr. Jaeger?
Sorry, yes.
Dr. Dykman?
Yes.
Mr. Worthy?
Yes.
Dr. Gant?
Yes.
Dr. Knox?
Yes.
Dr. Maddox?
Yes.
Thank you. Okay. Thank you. We'll move forward with our consent agenda and discussion. We've uh, discussed, I think, all of these. Um, and had the opportunity to talk about them. So is there a motion? I'm, I'm gonna open the floor for a motion to uh, for our consent agenda.
So moved. We all do.
I hear you.
All right, so we have a, a, a motion, a second, a third, and a fourth.
That's the roll call.
Assuming that there's no discussion, I imagine that we would have reached out by now. We'll go ahead and take a vote. Um, Dr. Thomas, if you would, do a.
Mr. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Stevens?
Yes.
Ms. Davis?
Yes.
Dr. Jaeger?
Yes.
Dr. Dykman?
Yes.
Mr. Worthy?
Yes.
Dr. Gant?
Yes.
Dr. Knox?
Yes.
Dr. Maddox?
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Moving forward to our other action items, um, number 13.1, the action to approve the purchase and installation of the artificial turf, an eight lane track at Clark Central High School. Um, open the floor for a motion.
Dr. Gant, before we move forward, I just wanted to make sure, and I'm sorry, I'm trying to get to the right emails, um, that we had the accurate information on that, just for sake of the records. And Mr. Gilbert, I may have to call on you, I have a flip screen so much. Wanted to make sure we gave you the numbers for the architect and engineering fees. And so um, for Cedar Shoals, it will be forty seven thousand, six hundred dollars, six hundred and two dollars. And for Clark Central's, two hundred and sixty nine thousand, one hundred and eighty one dollars. And that is just the five point five percent for architect and engineering cost, um, that's standard, but we did not list that when we met last week.
Thank you.
Uh huh.
Thank you for that information. Considering that information that we should just share it with us. Um, we'll open the floor for a motion for item thirteen point one.
I so moved that we adopt the, uh, propose, the recommendation to proceed with those two property enhancements.
A second.
Okay, thank you. Um, Ms. Davis and Mr. Davis, open the floor. Any follow-up questions for Dr. Thomas? In light of this new information or the existing?
I just want to commend the team. You, you guys did a great job of working us through that and getting good consensus on the part of everybody that's involved in this particular expenditure. So I really appreciate the extra time put back into circling back around with everyone and getting uh, consensus to move forward. Thank you.
Thank you.
And if I could second that, uh, I think that what we're doing by going to uh, eight lane track, even though it's, it is going to cost us some extra, I think for the, for the future. Um, I think it's gonna be a real benefit to this community. So I, I again commend the work of uh, of those who worked on it.
Thank you. Any additional comments or questions? Dr. Thomas, if you would, conduct a roll call for us.
Yes, ma'am. Mr. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Stevens?
No.
Ms. Davis?
Yes.
Dr. Jaeger?
Yes.
Dr. Dykman?
Yes.
Mr. Worthy?
Yes.
Dr. Gant?
An abstain.
Dr. Knox?
Yes.
Dr. Maddox?
Yes.
Thank you, I think. Did you get that, Ms. Palmer? Seven yeses, one no, and one abstain.
I have seven yes, one no, and one abstain, yes.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
Thank you all. Um, on behalf of our students and staff at both schools, I'm sure they're very appreciative as well as the community.
Thank you, Dr. Thomas. Uh, item thirteen two, this is the action to approve the program of study booklet. The floor is open for a motion.
No move.
Thank you, Mr. Davis and Dr. Maddox. Any follow-up questions?
I'm sorry, I didn't get a chance to read that. Did we make that change to the tables or is, is that all resolved now?
Um, yes, ma'am. Um, I had a conversation with uh, Mr. Worthy. We did talk about the table. Um, the table will remain the same. Our conversation also went to the number of credits, which I think was the deeper kind of conversation around the table with moving to block scheduling. Currently, when um, our students take six classes and they can accrue twenty four credits to graduate. With block scheduling, students will take eight classes per year. And so they would accrue thirty two credits. We decided to um, leave the credits the same. So students that are behind, um, they could take some, they would not have to attend summer school. They could possibly make up those classes that they're deficient in during the regular school year. It gives an opportunity to take more AP classes and to take more pathway assessments. So Dr. Um, uh, Mr. Worthy and I had that conversation and I believe that it is resolved.
Thank you so much.
Okay, any other questions? I will go ahead and take a vote.
Ma'am, we ready?
Yes.
Mr. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Stevens?
Yes.
Ms. Davis?
Yes.
Dr. Jaeger?
Yes.
Dr. Dykman?
Yes.
Mr. Worthy?
Yes.
Dr. Gant?
Yes.
Dr. Knox?
Yes.
Dr. Maddox?
Yes.
Thank you. And um, our last item under section thirteen is the action to approve our GSBA resolutions. And I open the floor for a motion.
So moved.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Davis. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, Mr. Davis, if you can give us a brief overview of this?
Sure. Um, first off, I do want to uh, thank uh, Dr. Jaeger for, for her input. Uh, for the, the first proposal that we're going to be talking about. Um, I think it's significantly better than, than it was and um, but now let me explain to the public what we're doing. Um, the uh, Georgia School Board Association, every year reviews its um, legislative positions that they take to the state legislature and advocate for or advocate against. If it's, if it's in the policy that we oppose something, then they will oppose it if it's in the positions uh, to do so in, in the GSBA positions. And the procedure is that we have to have uh, whatever uh, changes we want to do as a school board. It has to be voted by us and uploaded to the uh, Georgia School Board Association site by the seventeenth. And then there is, is typically a meeting in May in which uh, these are reviewed by the operations committee. And then they're, they are voted on by the entire um, uh, Georgia School Board Association in their summer uh, conference. Which I think it's already been postponed, but they have not postponed the uh, introduction of resolutions that a school board uh, would, would like for the operations to consider and thereby the Georgia School Board Association to consider. So given that, um, I want to take each one at, by itself. What it says, and, and of course, the language is up there. But there was some, there was talk a couple of years ago, our state legislators to uh, have a alternative to our teachers and staff contributing to the teacher retirement fund and instead could fund what we, what we're calling here a, a option, optional defined contribution, which is um, like a 401K, um, and the um, state would put some in and so would the um, so would the employee. And then um, at a certain point, when that employee retired, then they could begin to withdraw on their money. They would not uh, receive payment from the teacher retirement system, but from their own personal account. Uh, this is something that uh, you know, the business community is heading in that direction. But what it does is it leaves the employee at um, at the disadvantage if the stock market goes down. Because they're basically um, betting on the money growing. And at the time that they retire, that it's sufficient enough to pay them a uh, living retirement check. That stands in contrast to currently, we only have one retirement system. Employees put in, uh, put into it, as do uh, the employers, the, the school districts around the state. And that is a defined benefit. In other words, for employees who are planning to retire a year or two ahead of time, they can contact T R S and uh, find out exactly what amount they will be receiving when they retire, and that amount stays the same. And the state, we, uh, T R S invests the money and they've done quite well in that process.
Mr. Davis, can I interrupt? I'm sorry.
Um, I'm looking at all of the participants and not everyone has their phone on mute or their video.
And I can't tell the background noise is coming from, but if, if everyone on the call, unless you're talking, if you would place your um, your, your screens or your computers or what have you on mute, and that way we can um, hear it just a little bit better. Thank you.
Okay, that's all about that, that resolution. Uh, Dr. Jaeger, do you want to add to it since you did a, did a good job rewriting it?
Well, I hope it now speaks for itself.
Okay. So anyway, what I, uh, what I'm asking is, uh, I, I forget, have we moved it? I can't remember. Okay, we have. Anyway.
There's a, there's a motion for the, in our agenda, Greg, I think showing up really just as one proposal, so.
Oh, one, one, okay, so that's, is there any discussion on, on that particular proposal?
I have a question about it. So what you're saying is that we oppose having this um, option? Or, or having that, that as an option, the optional retirement?
That's correct.
Okay. Um, and as I'm reading it, and this is something that we have at, at UGA as well, so um, you can, UGA has it as an option. You can do T R S or you can do the optional retirement program. Um, and the, and obviously the T R S is better, but you have to be in it for ten years um, in order to get the benefit from it. And I understand, I see how you have written there that um, if we give them this option, it, it, or having the T R S sort of encourages people to stick around longer. Um, but I think not having the option makes it so that you're kind of penalizing people who end up not staying around for ten years. And, and sometimes people just don't know.
Well, I, I, I do want to point out that the uh, that if you are not, if you get hired by a school district and let's say you work eight years, you can withdraw your money that, that you've contributed
Right.
out.
Right, but you don't get any benefit.
No, you do not get, you do not get the employer side of that either.
Right.
Um, so, you know, I'm, and, and I understand that on the university level, now I've uh, I don't, like I say, I'm not associated with the university, so I'm not sure how those who, who went that way uh, feel about the program. But I think that in terms of uh, teaching K-12 um, or pre-K-12, I, I think that this, that, at least for me personally, this was a real attractive draw. And uh, I know that you were saying a, a choice, but if we do give it a choice, then you're gonna have less money going into T R S. Right now, T R S is one of the, the, the Georgia T R S is one of the better retirement systems. And by, by mandating that all employees become part of it is, is one of the reasons why we haven't gone the way of Illinois, which is, which is upside down in terms of you know, and, and they're not the only school, um, uh, state school system. There are so many school systems statewide that are um, upside down. In other words, they don't have enough money to pay the benefits that they promised. And um, some of that is because of just risky investment practices, which this, this particular. So.
Are they separate, Greg? Uh, is it separate for Georgia or is it one T R S system nationwide?
No, this is just for Georgia.
And is, and how solvent is this T R S system for Georgia?
We're, we are funded and, and. We are funded and Mr. Worthy can back me up because he follows this very closely. But I want to say, Mr. Worthy, aren't we about 78% vested in terms of our TRS funds?
You have a projection somewhere that tells you you're fully funded through some year.
Yeah.
Calendar year, and I'm curious about that. But again, so I retired under a system, a workforce system that did the same change. And so we had the option of staying with the company's retirement system or investing in a 401K. We couldn't do both. And so we were able to calculate our pensions between the two periodically. And so again, I came out fine, but other people may not have, I don't know. But it was a choice.
Well, if we had had a choice, I think my wife would have chose to go the optional defined contribution and she would have not worked for Clark County and I wouldn't be here today. Some people may say that would be an asset. But, you know, I'm just, I think that we really need to, given the fact that we are missing teachers in this state, that we do not have the teaching workforce that we need to adequately prepare our students for the future. And because we don't have enough, then, you know, we have less of a choice in terms of who is actually placed in front of our children. So I think that when you go into education, asking people to make a commitment to both students and a state, it's been traditionally done and I think it's worked well and I don't think we should mess with it. So that's my two cents. Any more discussions on that?
So if you don't get vested at 10 years, if you leave in year eight or anything nine, you only get to take your money that you put into TRS, they let you take that out with you when you leave?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay.
And right now, Mr. Davis and this Government Relations Committee, as it's listed on our agenda, it is something we are considering both of these together.
Right. I just wanted to make sure that if no more questions, I'd be glad to move on to the other.
Okay, well, I just wanted to be sure that I heard Dr. Dyckman's thoughts. Were there any others?
You know, it probably would have been good to separate these two because I don't think I feel one way or the other about that particular one. It's clearer now. Thank you so much, Tish. And thank you for the explanations, Mr. Davis. Yeah, but again, having experienced that, I'm not seeing the high risk there. So we can go ahead to the second one.
The second one deals with our undocumented students. And at the Government Relations Committee, before we supported it to pass on to this meeting, there was discussion about more specificity in terms of not just the resolution itself, but the rationale. And there are a large number of states, and I've listed them there, that have already recognized the fact that undocumented immigrant children, and these are typically kind of nicknamed the Dreamers, have much to offer any state in which they reside. And so to educate them, pre-K to 12, and then allow them to stop their education and not encourage them and not allowing them to attend a higher level of public education in the state is a real travesty and it really is a waste of a valuable resource, which is human labor. And we're talking about human labor that is, that we want to see educated to the highest degree possible.
So they can, I'm sorry, go ahead.
So they could attend our public institutions at the going in-state tuition rates as opposed to attending on the basis of a foreign student rate, which is three times higher than the, I shouldn't say foreign, I'm sorry. But anyway, a international student rate, which is three times higher than in-state. And we also want, go ahead, I'm sorry, go ahead.
I was going to say, I understand this to simply be that if they went to school in Georgia, graduated from high school, that they should be allowed to do in-state tuition. Is that right?
Right.
Do they have to go all grades, K through 12 here?
No, 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 I, you know, different, we haven't specified. I mean, generally speaking, you know, you would certainly want to have, you know, like before I vow Victorian, you can't come in your senior year from South Carolina and scoop it up.
I think they changed that, but anyway.
I know, well, anyway, anyway, they're obviously, you know, where there needs to be a certain time period that you've been educated in Georgia, but that's not specified in here. You know, this is just.
That's a discriminatory, that is the discriminatory nature of the rule today is that yes, there are some time restrictions on undocumented immigrants graduating from high school here. And I think again, I think the requirement is six months residency to be a resident of the state of Georgia when it comes to college tuition, is that right? For everybody else, I think it is. I think it's only six months in-state in order to pay in-state tuition. And so I think that we shouldn't discriminate against the, I support this one. We shouldn't discriminate against undocumented children.
I agree, totally. I do want to point out, people also wanted to know the numbers. And so, you know, I've got the numbers there in terms of how many students we're talking about, both nationwide and in Georgia. Any other discussions? I think Linda makes a very good point.
I'm struggling now because that one I really liked. The first one I could do without. That's how we get some bills passed.
Yeah, I do like the, I mean, I do like the, I definitely am in support of our undocumented immigrant children as listed in the policy that is just plain out discriminatory, actually, with how things exist. I do tend to agree with this first, the first, the area E, under retirement. I do like the, I like options. I think, I do think people should have options and have as much information as they can and make informed decisions. So I'm a little bit, yeah, a little bit torn. I know the floor, the motion right now exists for both of these together and it's not something I'm not going to vote for.
Madam President?
Yes.
Okay, somehow I got disconnected there and I was trying to chime in when Greg called on me, but you all didn't hear me. I want to go back to the retirement because Greg mentioned something that is very important there. And many people don't realize this, the teacher retirement system has such a strong impact on Georgia's economy. You're talking $87 billion. Now, having said that, well, recently it took a hit now. You listen to me closely, I read this, the stock market, they said, have some money in, whatever, money invested all over. But anyway, took a hit of $15 billion. But still, the teacher retirement system in Georgia, as Greg mentioned a few minutes ago, it's a strong, and I started to say the strongest teacher retirement system in this country, but even compared to other retirement systems. Now going back and reading that statement in terms of they are really opposed to this high-risk investments. I mentioned to you all earlier about this guy, Tommy Benton. He's out of Jefferson, Georgia, had proposed a bill that 401Ks for new teachers entering the teaching profession, which I totally oppose that. That is risky, risky, because if you followed the stock market almost crashing in the last two or three weeks, 401Ks took a hit. Now Greg mentioned something earlier, when people leaving the teaching profession, they can take their money out. Yes, they can take their money out if they are leaving the teacher, the teaching profession. But if they're leaving the teacher profession, going to, I'm sorry, if they're leaving a system in Georgia, going to another system in Georgia, they can't take their money out. Now if they're leaving the profession in the state of Georgia and going to another state, they can take their money out. And something Linda said, and I can't recall exactly what she said, but many states are not like Georgia. They don't have their own separate teacher retirement system. They're part of a system with other state employees, ERS, Employment Retirement System. The state of Alabama, where I'm from, they were part of the ERS in the state of Alabama for years, but I think in the last five years, they have their own teacher retirement system, which is good. So I felt like that was important to say that. But you're right, Greg, $87 billion, you just think about that. That is strong. It's an impact on Georgia's economy. Thank you very much.
If I can respond to what Dr. Gant said, I'm looking at a house right now in my neighborhood of a retired teacher out of Oconee County. And she is one of many Oconee County teachers I've talked to who signed up for Oconee County to work there when they were young and they were impressed by the fact that their pay was higher because Oconee had had the opportunity to opt out of the Social Security system and take the money that the Oconee School District would be contributing to Social Security and giving it to that teacher. And people say, well, this is great. This is money I need. And when you're 25, 26, it sounds great because if you're that age, who's going to retire? You're going to work forever, you know? But those teachers today, I've never met an Oconee teacher that said, yes, I worked 30 years in the Oconee school system. I don't get a dime in Social Security and I really like the fact that I've got, I'm sitting on $80,000 on the side for my retirement. So again, I'm looking at it from what, if our job as a school board is to take care of the interest of our staff, then yes, it's nice to have choices, but you don't want to give a choice, and I'm just, maybe I'm just overprotective, but a choice to someone who was very young and to make a decision that's going to affect them when they're 60. And I just, I feel like it's just a crime. And the reason why it's even being, why it's not done is, I mean, excuse me, why it's even being proposed is to save money. And the legislators who have talked about doing something like this in Georgia say, this will save us money. So it's a cost-saving factor. It's not choice or it's not to help teachers or our certified, our non-teacher staff. It is to save money for the state. So that's my last two cents.
And you're correct, Greg, not only Oconee County, there are counties, several counties in the metro area. They are not a part of the Social Security Administration. And as you stated, when they become 60 or above, they regret it.
Dr. Knox and Dr. Jaeger, did I see your hand?
Yeah, I just wanted to speak since I'm in the TRS system at UGA and I know quite a few professors that did not for that, that were here in the 90s. I came in '01 and I wasn't actually even eligible for TRS for a few years. I was in, I think, something below that, ERS or something. And so anyway, when I've told people that the advice we got was to go with TRS, over and over again, I've had people at UGA shake their heads and say, I wish I'd done that, I wish I'd done that. Because in general, what has happened across this entire country is that you used to have, middle-class people had jobs with pensions, which was great. You had security later in life, you didn't have to worry about that as long as you stayed with the company and, you know, there were some things with that. And then starting in the 80s, the pensions were eaten alive by mergers and acquisitions and so forth, so that there are actually very few pensions in the private sector anymore. Most pensions are in the public sector. And that's part of our insecurity. That's part of the safety net that's been torn. And so it's my understanding that having TRS is really a boon to us. It's a good thing because of what the rationale is here. So I just wanted to kind of put that perspective on it. People that work in the private sector don't even think about pensions anymore in large part because they were all done away with. But that doesn't mean that pensions are a bad thing. It actually means it's a good thing that corporate raiders went after. If anybody's ever seen the movie Wall Street, the original movie with Charlie Sheen, Martin Sheen and the gang, that's actually the story of this. It's about a company being taken over and our union being taken over and having their pensions sucked away. So I'll stop there.
So is, I'm sorry, it's not my turn.
Dr. Jaeger and then Ms. Davis?
I was just going to add one last thing, which is that the amount of money that the state puts into ORP versus TRS per employee is also different. And at the moment, the amount going into the ORP, for me, because I chose ORP, is very much smaller than the amount going into other, like for John, for TRS. So it's negotiable how much they're putting into the ORP and that's just, doesn't seem fair either.
And so my only question is, is it still going to be an option? You can choose TRS or you can choose the ORP?
Our position is that we would prefer that people not be given that option. As contrary as it seems, that most of us prefer more choices. I think the point is they offer this choice and one is a significantly less valuable choice that also weakens the program, the original program. So that's why we don't support the choice. That's at least what the policy reads, or what the suggested policy reads.
Okay. Dr. Dyckman?
I just have one more thing to say about that. And I totally support TRS and I think that it is great. And I have no, I would never say I wanted it to go away or not be an option. My only issue is that I think, yes, TRS is a better option if you're there for 10 years. But if you're not, then it's not a better option and you don't get any of the benefits of it unless you're there for 10 years or more. So do I wish that I were on TRS? I do. But when I came to UGA, I didn't know if I would be here for 10 years. So if I, if I had not chosen ORP and I had left, you know, in six years or whatever, then I wouldn't have any of the benefit of the university putting any of that money in. So as I'm finishing my 10th year, do I wish that I had picked TRS? I do, but I didn't have that information at the beginning. So I think even though TRS is ultimately a better choice in most circumstances, I think sometimes it's not. And then, I don't know, I feel like, I guess I'm not strongly opposed to them having this choice.
Can I clarify one thing? I think that you can move within the state of Georgia and still keep your vesting, right? That's correct. You don't have to just be Clark County School District for 10 years. You just have to be Georgia for 10 years. But I get your point, Karen.
All right, so if that's the end of our discussion related to this, it sounds like it's time to take a vote.
Okay, so we have decided that we're going to send these forward together? We are not going to separate them?
Well, right now, the motion is to accept both of these. I mean, I imagine there could be some type of amendment or substitute to separate these, but Government Relations Committee, I should probably defer to you. Is this like both, like all or nothing? How does this go forward?
I, I, I mean, I don't mind taking a vote for each one. I mean, I, 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 that's, that's how we've done it in the past. Um, I understand how it's listed in the agenda, um, but I don't, I don't mind taking a separate vote if that's. Um, I would, I would ask the other members of the Government Relations Committee to kind of weigh in. I, I, I see a yes and yes.
Okay.
I'm in agreement with that as well.
Okay, Dr. Stevens, Dr. Knox and, uh, Dr. Jaeger.
Yeah, yeah, we're all good. Uh, so may I make a substitute motion then? That, uh, that we vote on each of these, uh, resolutions separately.
Second.
Okay, second, uh, there's no discussion. I don't think I see any hands or faces. Let's, um, vote on that substitute motion. Um, Dr. Thomas?
Mr. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Stevens?
Abstaining.
Ms. Davis?
Yes.
Dr. Jaeger?
Yes.
Dr. Dyckman?
Yes.
Mr. Worthy?
Yes.
Dr. Gant?
Yes.
Dr. Knox?
Yes.
Dr. Maddox? Dr. Maddox?
She's muted.
Yes, thank you.
Okay, thank you for that, uh, substitute motion. With, what I have is there were, um, there was one abstaining.
Correct.
Yes.
Okay, and the remaining yes. All right, so we're back at this. Um, we have the motion that carried to consider these separately. So I'm going to open the floor for a motion for the first, um, proposal, which is related to retirement and the retirement system.
So I will move, uh, that we, uh, approve the first resolution regarding the retirement system.
Second.
Okay, any further discussion? Okay, um, Dr. Thomas, if you would take our poll, we're all in favor.
Yes, Mr. Davis?
Aye. And I just wanted to say, I jumped the gun a little bit there. I was voting abstaining to this, actually. I, um, in, um, uh, actually yes to the last one, so.
Okay, and so with that substitute motion, Mr. Stevens, are you saying when you originally abstaining, were you voting yes to that substitute motion?
Yes.
For the record?
Okay, go back and change.
Okay, so you were, uh, you're abstaining on the motion for the resolution regarding retirement, is that correct, Mr. Stevens?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay, Ms. Davis?
No.
Dr. Jaeger?
Yes.
Dr. Dyckman?
You're muted. Sorry, that was working before. Uh, no.
Mr. Worthy?
Yes.
Dr. Gant?
No.
Dr. Knox?
Yes.
Dr. Maddox?
Yes.
Ms. Palmer, I have, um, five yeses, three no's and one abstaining, is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay.
Thank you. Excuse me. We'll move forward with our, um, the second part or the second proposal and open the floor for a motion.
I move that we consider the second about, um, immigrants. Undocumented, excuse me.
So moved, I mean, uh, second.
No other questions? Don't see any hands. All right, Dr. Thomas, if you would take the roll.
Mr. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Stevens?
Yes.
Ms. Davis?
Yes.
Dr. Jaeger?
Yes.
Dr. Dyckman?
Yes.
Mr. Worthy?
Yes.
Dr. Gant?
Yes.
Dr. Knox?
Yes.
Dr. Maddox?
Yes.
Nine guesses, Ms. Palmer.
That's what I have.
All right, we are at our motion to adjourn.
Thumbs up.
Second.
Second.
Okay, I'm muted by mistake, darn it.
Okay, so no, um, no questions or discussion that I see or hear, all right? This, uh, we'll do a quick all in favor of adjourning.
Aye.
Just, aye, raise your hands, okay?
Oh, I gotta go find the little thing to raise my hand now, huh?
Okay, all right.
Thank you.
Thank you. Meeting is adjourned eight twenty-four.
Thank you, Dr. Thomas. Thank you very much.
Yeah.
Thank you, Dr. Thomas.
Thanks, everybody.
You, Dr. Gant and Dr. Thomas, it was great. Thank you.
Thank you. Great safe all. Thank you, Cabinet.
Thank you, Cabinet. Have a good night.
Leaving the meeting, where is it?
Did he find it? Okay. I think it's just us. Now you ending, Mr. Faison? Trying to get us off live, Dr. Gant.
Okay, all right, that's okay. Have a good night, Dr. Thomas.
Good night.